Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us at the special joint meeting of the Madera City Council and the City of Madera Planning Commission. We can have roll call, please.
Mayor Andrew Madellin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jose Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Cece Gallegos.
Here.
Member Will Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Derek Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Charles Rigby.
Here.
And Councilmember Donald Hawley.
Present.
Thank you, Sonia. Brandy Boyle.
Vice Chairperson Robert Grant Jr.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Israel Cortez.
Here.
Commissioner Bruce Norton.
Here.
Commissioner Kenneth Huchin.
Here.
Commissioner Pamela Tyler.
Here.
Commissioner Gemma De Silva, absent. Commissioner Richard Broadhead.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll stand with me, please. Councilman Donald Hawley will lead us in the invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Most Lord gracious, Father, thank you for this joint meeting of our city's spearheads to work together to do what is needed in our city. Or we pray for those all who are sick and shutting, Lord. Asking you a special prayer for our family, Lord, as we have lost several folks in our family this month. We ask that you strengthen our family, strengthen our city, go with us and stand by us. Lord, as we take upon this night, we ask that you be in control, give us guidance and influence on how we can do your city justice. In Christ Jesus' name we say, "Amen."
Amen.
Thank you, Men council. Thank you, Councilman Hawley. If you'll join me in the pledge, please. Let me salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seeing that this is not our regular meeting night, it's a special meeting night, we still will call for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak under this, under public comment, I will then read the definition prior to you speaking. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Boyle, you're testing me, aren't you?
He's antsy.
He's antsy this evening.
He's just anxious.
I think so. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move into our one and only agenda item. This is a no-noticed public workshop to provide for review of and input concerning the proposed comprehensive update of Title X, Chapter III zoning, last updated in 1992. Mr. Boyle.
Thank you, Mayor Madellin. Chairperson Grant. It's a pretty prestigious evening to put all, both our council members and commissioners in one place, so it must be a pretty big deal. Let me commence with moving forward. It is indeed a big deal. You know, I was looking at my timelines for adoption here and running through all the files, and I found a report to the, to the Planning Commission in November of 2010 outlining our timeline to adoption of a revised planning ordinance, fresh off an adopted general plan. And then something happened. I think it was like a great recession and all these other things occurred, and ultimately, eight years later, I stand here today with a finished draft. I hope you embrace it. Most recently, we've looked at a couple of workshops with my Planning Commission as precursors to the noticed workshops that we did on adoption, that we did on the draft itself. The workshops were primarily looking at how the general plan worked in concert with the zoning ordinance. And then I also provided two workshops with our developers and stakeholders on May 31st and June 4th in anticipation of bringing this joint session to you. I don't want to bore my Planning Commissioners, so I'll be brief as it relates to general plan, the general plan implementation, but the general plan is a long-range planning document that looks at the future of the city. You could call it the foundational piece of land use planning and infrastructural planning and so many other components within a general plan, fire, life, safety. But two specific elements of the general plan are specific to your planning division, and they really look hard at the future of the community in terms, from a planning perspective. The zoning ordinance, which we're looking at tonight, is a local law that spells out the immediate and allowable uses for each piece of property within the community. It's, it's land uses now. General plan is land uses from a long-term perspective. The purpose of that zoning is to implement the policies of the general plan. Now, I'm not going to go through each and every one of these particular goals, but the general plan, our general plan's built of principles. It's a building blocks general plan. It's principles, goals, and policies. The principles lead to goals, and the gold lead, gold, goals lead to policies. These are the goals of the two elements I've spoken towards, the community design element and the land use element, which are primarily enacted and implemented within your zoning From those goals come these policies. Just a brief page with, from our land use, pardon me, from our community design element. In this case, looking at policies related to that goal number four, which really spoke to the fabric and, welcome, and the fabric and makeup of our neighborhoods within the city. Not on our agenda tonight, but not to be ignored is our zoning map update. Pending adoption of the zoning ordinance update, then staff will move with purpose towards holding public hearings for the actual updating of the zoning map. What that will facilitate is consistency between the general plan and land use designations on a parcel-by-parcel basis. It will also incorporate new zone districts into the fabric of the city, and, because there are five zone districts we'll talk about briefly tonight, and it'll impact about 2,500 parcels within the city because of multitude of factors, most primarily because we have new zone districts that will wholesale change swaths of the community. When I look at the zoning ordinance, it's eight years worth of effort, but in the end, I look at it as primarily a structural reformatting and recodification of Chapter III zoning, because there isn't any, any major alterations to the zoning ordinance in terms, we haven't gone an entirely different segwayed in a different direction in how we, how we provide for land use planning within the community. What it really is, is a refresher from a formatting and from a codified perspective, whereas the current ordinance use, uses lists. This ordinance uses a more of a tabular format. We feel that the ordinance is more complete, and it provides more specificity, and one of those things that we're always trying to do within, when code writing, is to kind of remove some of the gray and provide for more black and white. I can't tell you how many times a developer has asked, asked the question, "Just tell me what I need to do." And that, having that, that gray removed and allowing someone to move with purpose can mean real dollars to that developer. It does create five new zone districts, and those are reflective of just changing land uses. In 1992, video stores were big, and video cades were bigger. And today, I don't know of a video arcade anywhere, except maybe in the bottom of Chancy Gold Casino where I get my hair cut. There are linkages between the various components of the ordinance. There's definitions and use schedules and development standards and parking, but in the end, they all are linked together in a cohesive working document, and we'll look at how that works as we move through this presentation. And let's just move with purpose through it, because I know that I'm trying to keep you in a 30-minute window, because I don't want anybody to get particularly bored with my voice, even I get tired of my own voice. First, let's look at residential and land use schedules. This is what they look like today. They're, they're long, long lists of uses, and for every zone district, you might have the same long, long list in place in the document. The new zoning ordinance provides for a table where you have the particular zones across the top in the columns, and the rows are the individual uses, and then within each of those, there's whether it's permitted or not permitted or what have you. It's a tabular form. You might also notice to the far right that there's references to other parts of the ordinance when, when that's appropriate to do so, so that a person may see this one particular call-out, but what we don't want to say is, "Nobody told me so." There might be a specific section that speaks to that use, so we have a reference there that a person may, may go to. Altogether, specificity and completeness. Our current ordinance provides prohibitions, but what it says is, if it's called out somewhere, then it, in one zone district, then it's not allowed for in other zone districts. But at the same time, almost every zone district says that other uses can be permitted with a use permit. So which is it? Prohibited or permitted with a use permit? In some cases, that brings some awkward, awkward interactions with individuals, some, so in the end, there are some plain and simple uses that just don't belong in certain zones, and there are prohibitions called out with a letter "N" in, in, in the use schedules. We look at development standards. Before, more long lists of types of development standards. Today, more of a tabular format for each of the individual zone districts that's much more digestible. Developer can grab that piece of paper, print it off, and have a really good understanding of what the development standards are at a particular zone without having to read four pages of ordinance. I like it. I think that the development community will like it as well. Here's another table for multifamily, where since it's very different, we're talking about multiple units on a single parcel, the types of development standards that might be applicable. They're still in a tabular form, so individuals can digest those without perhaps having to read a mini, mini-novulet. There are ordinances that span large volumes of paper. There are some deletions in the ordinance, believe it or not. I know it's 190-plus pages, but we did take some things out. In some cases, I can distinctly remember Community Development Director Merchant with a big red pin, one of those indelible ink markers, making a big X across the paper and saying something to the effect of, "Lose it." And although that hurt my feelings at the time, it's a whole lot less ink in our budget today. But here's a good example of a deletion. Multiple single-family dwelling units. Well, why was this in there? Why would we have multiple dwelling units in a single-family zone? Well, once upon a time in 1991, somebody, the ordinance didn't make any provisions for it, and somebody built three houses on an R1-zone parcel, and the neighborhood came unglued, but the ordinance didn't really speak to it at the time. So after it was built in 1992, there was, there was an ordinance update in 1993, which basically made it impossible to do that anymore. We've struck in that, struck that out of the ordinance, because the new ordinance provides that you can only have a single-family home on a single-family parcel. That's, that's a, that's a no-nonsense type of approach to that. But the city was compelled to write this ordinance in 1993, so that didn't happen again. In commercial, same type of format. Tabular land use schedules that in turn tie into the individual uses. Couple of slides here on the differences. The current ordinance has something called a food store. Now, I haven't been to a food store in a long time, but I've been to convenience stores and neighborhood markets and supermarkets and specialty food stores and the like, but not a food store. And so all of these different uses, oftentimes with very different types of activities and, and products being sold and a wide array of different sizes, whether it's a C-store or, or 100,000-square-foot supermarket, they're all very different than just a food store. The current ordinance is, the revised ordinance provides for definitions of each of those types of uses, so that you can more appropriately place them within the fabric of the commercial sections of the city. So, and, and we'll learn that the definitions really do tie closely into the tables. Virtually every use within the tables has a definition that provides for more specificity, where, where a food store could be many things and wasn't defined as anything in the current ordinance. New merchandise sales. I really love this as an addition, because there might be five pages of things that are new, that are merchandised, and that are sold in the current lists. And I have one call-out in my table. It's called new merchandise sales, and it spans a large breadth and scope of things that are new, that are merchandised, that are sold, that, that it should be permitted to be sold in virtually every commercial zone district in the city. So it gives a definition of what new merchandise sales is, gives a large, long list of examples that, what that might look like, and, and provides for more completeness and specificity when the ordinance. Let's move on to our new zone districts. One that has been exciting for me is the C3 downtown commercial zone district. I had my GIS team prepare a map of just the parcels that are proposed to be rezoned into the C3 zone. The general plan calls out specific policies that act to place, place reinforced emphasis on the city's Main Street, and this is kind of a, a next step within being able to implement new policies, new development standards within our zoning ordinance that sets that, that area aside and provides for future land use activities that are dedicated directly towards implementing the policies of the general plan specific to downtown. It stretches basically from the river all the way down the Gateway Corridor to the Olive Avenue alignment, and then out beyond Lake Street on, on East Yosemite Avenue, essentially our historic downtown core. The old Highway 99 commercial corridor, and then downtown itself. So that's the first zone district. The second zone district is the PCD, Planned Commercial Zone District. We have a PD zone district right now, planned development, but it's essentially for residential development only. And developers like the PD zone, because there may be some unique design criteria they want to apply, maybe there's reduced setbacks, maybe it's a gated community, maybe there's zero setbacks. There's any number of, a number of reasons why a developer might want a, a PD zone district as opposed to an R1 zone, where there's, there's just, this is what you can do and do it, fit it in the box. And, and that's all implemented through what's called a precise plan. But we don't have anything that would provide our commercial developer to have an opportunity to implement a vision through a precise plan, basically grow your own zone district on, on a project-by-project basis. It allows for them to create their own use schedules, much like residential development creates their own development standards, has specific homes approved as part of the precise plan and the like. Planned commercial development could provide for specific development standards, specific architectural criteria, use schedules and the like, that ultimately, with the approval of precise plan from the Planning Commission, that, that individual now basically has their own individual zone district. We've had multiple dialogues where there's a changing dynamic in, in the commercial community today, and whether that's infotainment or destination-type shopping in response to more shopping being done online. And this type of zone district will provide more of a, more of a hands-off approach in allowing people to take a vision and then realize that vision without trying to squeeze it into an existing development standard of one of the existing commercial zone districts. There, I know of shopping centers, both in Fresno and Clovis, that are, that are done and built on a, on a planned commercial development type of format, and those shopping centers have their own use schedules, there's, there's their own parking standards, everything about them is, is a function of the design criteria approved at first steps. So we're excited about that. It, that helps us to achieve other goals and policies within the general plan. There's also a limited industrial zone district, an LI. Currently, our bridge zone between commercial and industrial is the C2, a heavy commercial zone, but you might see that heavy commercial zone all over the community, because really the only real difference between a light commercial and heavy commercial is that heavy commercial provides for a, a few additional uses by right. But it doesn't, so consequently, most commercial development will be done in a C2 zone. Our, our Commons at the Fair is done in a C2 zone, but that certainly is in a bridge zone between industrial and commercial. It's, it's at the heart of our, our commercial freeway core. So the LI provides more of a bridge. Every city kind of has a catch-all that acts as that, acts as that bridge zone, and there's a long list of uses that are provided for, more often than not, because they're so diverse, they're approved via a conditional use permit. We kind of have that light industrial zone right here and now, because it was originally proposed by Berry Development for the Span Industrial Park some time ago, and that, that zone district has, or that, that area of our community now has everything from the Performing Arts Club to, which is right next to a machine shop, which is right next to an auto repair garage, which is just down the way from a church, which is, and all those are located in Span Industrial Park structures. That's what a limited industrial zone district is meant to do, kind of serve many different uses in a specific environment. Our next zone district is the R4 High Density Multifamily Zone District, but really what's happening here is a restructuring of our residential zone districts. That corresponds with the changing density of residential development that's envisioned within the general plan, with target densities that ask for a more denser urban form. The R4, the R4 zone basically replaces the R3 zone as a multifamily, high-density residential zone district. The R3 becomes a medium-density multifamily zone district. Now, R2, which is right now a medium-density, becomes a medium-density, single-family zone district. We see this trend towards smaller lot sizes, greater density, but they're freestanding, individually-built homes. And a good example of that might be, boy, there's probably hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of Leo Wilson Elevations, elevation homes in, in the Fresno area, all of them built on, on very small lots, but they're freestanding, single-family homes. The R2 zone kind of, kind of fills that gap in our standard R1 zones. Cumulatively, it provides for greater density, and the general plan's land use, land use element directs us to have a more dense urban form.
Chris.
Yes.
Just to clarify on that R2, when you say they're built on their own individual lot.
Right.
Are you saying you can fit two individual lots on that zoning, or that particular lot-sized parcel?
No. What I'm saying is that whereas a typical R1 lot might be, might be 6,000 square feet, a typical R2 lot could be something much smaller.
So it's just smaller in size as well?
Smaller in size, provide greater units per acre, and provide for a defined differentiation between a traditional, single-family neighborhood and perhaps more of a contemporary, single-family neighborhood, where still, homes are still on individual lots with, with standard setbacks.
Chris, for some frame of reference, would Clovis's Harlan Ranch meet a similar?
Certain, certain components of it. You have a good eye. That is Harlan Ranch in, in, in Clovis. And if you look at, if you look at this graphic, you'll see that there's everything from very large 12,000-square-foot lots to these lots here, these homes here are built on 2,400-square-foot lots.
These ones are.
So, and they're freestanding lots on garage courts. This would be a gated 6,000-square-foot community. These homes here are on 3,200 square feet. These homes here are on 4,000 square foot, 50 by 80s. So just in this small aerial photograph, you're seeing all of these homes are freestanding, single-family homes, but some of them are at a low density, some of them are a medium density. The general plan asks for these types of densities to evolve in, in our community. Your, the Village D is really envisioning this type of development occurring, you know, in the very near future here in the city of Madera, where you don't miss a single potential buyer, because each of these models satisfies a particular niche in the marketplace. So that's exactly what the R2 zone is supposed to provide for. Smaller lot, single-family residential. Right now, we don't really, don't really speak to it. We, we put our R2 zone, and some of those are duplexes, and some of those are, are single-family homes, but if you look at some of the neighborhoods we have that are in the current R2 zone, they struggle for an identity, because there's kind of a mishmash going on there, where you might have single-family homes, and then the person right next door who has an R2 zone had this vision to drop another unit in the backyard, and the, the cohesion of the neighborhood starts to fall apart over time. And so we'd rather, rather start to define what those neighborhoods function as early on in the process, as opposed to try and respond and do damage control. The specific plan area, we have a development on three square miles that we're currently doing an EIR on, and our general plan requires that within the village reserve zone, a specific plan is brought forth as a part of that development proposal, along with a public facilities financing plan. But we didn't have really a mechanism or, or an implementation tool for a specific plan in our ordinance. And so consequently, we have many specific plans in the city, but perhaps they, they struggle to accomplish what the original purpose and intent of the, the plan is. And there's, there's missing pieces here and there, and there, and here. We'd like to be able to allow that, that specific plan area to develop 100% hardly within their specific plan. So that means they have their own use schedules, their own development standards, their own design criteria, their own, their own street, street sections if they so choose, their own branding, all of those things that come with the development of a large, large residential, commercial, mixed-use type of project. This is the, the enabling ordinance that provides for that. There is a, there is some verbiage in here that says, "Where it's not called out in the specific plan, you'll lean upon the, the zoning ordinance as a guidance, guidance tool." But my hope is, and I think that it's the same hope that the developer in, in Village D has as well, that ultimately their, their product, the specific plan that comes before you, will be its own, own living document. The, on a zoning map, it'll, it won't say R1 this or C that. It'll say SP and the name of the development, so it might be SP Village D. And, and so to see what the zone district is in a particular area of that, that specific plan, you'll go to the specific plan. They, it's a create-your-own, own zoning ordinance, essentially. We're excited about that, too, and, and hopeful that it, it provides for a, a new instrument that equates to better planning. I talked about linkages to start, to start the, the presentation. I'll be wrapping up soon. This is what I mean by linkages of the ordinance. Here is a standard business support services use that's in a commercial zone. Notice there's a lot of Ps for permitted all the way across it. And, but what is a business support services? Well, in the old ordinance, there might be a long list of types of businesses that equate to being business support type services. If we go down to our definition, there's a long list of those uses that, that satisfy the definition of business support services. If I want to know what the parking standards are for that, that same use, I'd go to the, to the parking, the parking standards, which have the same uses in their parking standard fields, and it provides my direction in terms of what the, the parking stall count is for business support services. It's kind of, you're not going to have to struggle through one thing to another. You should be able to find all the information you need relatively easily as it relates to those types of uses. New merchandise sales, same thing. There's your use schedule across, there's your definition, and there's your parking standards for new merchandise sales. That's not really how our ordinance works right now. It's a much more digestible, the common man can migrate through this ordinance, ordinance fairly easily. We're rounding down to the last few slides. I want to touch base a little bit more on that parking. You know, if there's ever a controversial issue in a zoning ordinance, it might very well be parking, especially in the last couple of years. And so the city's looked hard at, and compared other ordinances in trying to find compromises as it relates to our revised parking standards. The Athletic Club, which had a parking standard adopted by resolution of the Planning Commission, we've, we've upped the requirement for, for parking in an Athletic Club environment for reasons that are not too far, not too far detached from the, from the council. But from a planner's perspective, one of the biggest problems we had, had to do with barber shops and beauty parlors, because the current ordinance says one stall per 300 square feet. But what if there's 1,000 square feet and there are four stations in there? That means there could be four employees and four individual clients in 1,000 square feet, which equates to eight parking stalls being used at any one given time. And we had real, real pushback from surrounding businesses that beauty parlors and barber shops were impacting their available parking. This is more realistic. Two spaces for each station, where you're talking about employee-client, and that should help soften some of the telephone calls that the planning department receives from time to time. My last component within- My last component within my presentation has to do with site plan review. I've kinda color-coded this because we could talk a long time about site plan review, the differences between now and, and what's proposed, but it really boils down to the, these three color codes. The, the current, the current ordinance provides a single paragraph, which within that paragraph provides three specific occasions when site plan review is triggered. I've broken them down into red, green, and blue. The revised ordinance, in looking for better completeness and specificity, has actually nine call-outs. But the first four really speak to the first call-out, which was all new, expanded or changed uses of property, which involve construction, shall require a site plan review. We try and better define what construction is and what construction isn't. The second component, which had to do with uses, uh, new uses which necessitate onsite improvements to comply with the provisions of the municipal code. We had that straight call-out, but we also look at some of the biggest problems we run into in, in requiring site plan review is about building occupancy classifications, because the building code can be very unforgiving with older buildings and it can bring huge requirements upon a prospective change in tendency. And then the last one is essentially the same as it is right now. The purple stuff at the bottom, um, there is a departure. I noted that we've had problems with putting duplexes and the like in residential zones where they end up being positive, uh, positive contributors to those neighborhoods. Right now, there is no requirement for site plan review for duplexes and, and multiple, single, multiple, single-family homes upon residential zoned lots. Um, there is a call-out for site plan review as a component of construction of multi-family in the, those, those situations. And there is that, that catch-all, the other activities which, in the opinion of the planning director, alter a project site in such a way as to require application of site plan review to achieve the purposes specified in ten-three-four-five-oh. Ten-three-four-five-oh is the section immediately above this section, which talks about, uh, which provides a purpose and a rationale for, um, for measuring a site to any requirement for site plan review. That, that is, there isn't that type of rationale in the current ordinance. Um, but an example might be, um, a, a site that proposes to significantly expand a parking field wherein, um, there isn't a building permit requirement for a parking field. There may be requirements for, um, for a, uh, you know, drainage, you know, drainage plan on that site. But since it doesn't require a building permit, it's not really a structure, but it could significantly alter the functionality of a site. Especially if it looks to add new drive approaches onto the public right-of-way and the like. Those are those, those other activities which from time to time, the city's faced with. In essence, the revised ordinance does three things. It defines the purpose and intent of the site plan review, provides better specificity as to when it is and when it's not required. And it actually does provide specific occasions where site plan review is specifically not applicable to a particular activity. I'm nearing the end. Um, this is my last slide. Typically, it'll be staff recommends. I've eight ears in the balance right here and now. Staff recommends that, uh, staff incorporate any recommendations from tonight's workshop and then schedule a planning commission public hearing to the next available date, moving with purpose, wherein I could then bring back the ordinance back to city council for introduction and subsequent adoption, and then begin public hearings for amendment of the zoning map. That completes my workshop, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chris, how did your sessions go with the developers?
Uh, full disclosure, no developer came. I did have some dialogue, um, but their questions and concerns were, were minimal. There are more comments than, than a concern. So I think that speaks to my original statement that really, um, in the end, this is really a reformatting. That there's, there isn't any real surprises that are coming down the pike here. For, for some of the development community, we did have some dialogue with D R Horton as well and, uh, some of the out-of-town national builders. And they would be used to having much more, much more hands-on by government as it relates to the development of subdivisions in any, any other, other cities that they do business in. So they were just making sure, you mean you're not requiring that? Does that mean you, what does that mean? Doesn't say I'm requiring that, so that, that's what it means, I'm not, the city would not require this, that, or the other, so.
This reformatting style that you've developed, by the way, nicely done, I, I think it really simplifies the process. But does that fall in line with other cities in the area? Is this something that Fresno is doing, Clovis, other, other, uh, large progressive cities in the area?
Um, Clovis isn't doing it. When they reformatted their ordinance in the mid-two thousands and tens, I think they were done like in two thousand and fourteen on the tail end of their general plan update, they retained the same lists. I think that, I don't, I'm not gonna pretend that I, I, I developed it and, uh, and have, have a copyright on it. I'm sure there are some other cities that had similar type of format and that I just, that I just saw it and said that would be a great way to encapsulate a lot of information in a tabular form.
I agree, Chris, I think you did a fantastic job. Took you a while though, eight years, but you did a fantastic job. I, I really like the efficiency aspect of it, the linkages, but I see two different clientele. I, I see builders and developers that have been there, done that. You know, it's not my first rodeo and I'm still gonna ask and do the push. And I'm sure everybody will agree that whether, when it comes to variances or issues. But then you talked a little bit about that downtown corridor. And when it comes to somebody that's maybe not as, as advanced in their knowledge on how things work. And so I don't want to go sideways here, but I do want to talk a little bit about, when we talk about efficiencies and linkages, there's still gonna be that face-to-face hand-holding kind of requirement. And some of the issues that we faced is building separate from planning, separate from engineering on what those requirements are. Are we gonna continue to link those three when it comes to requirements on what we are asking of a new business or a remodeled business? And how are we gonna approach that with some sort of linkage or efficiency?
Would you have multiple comments that lead to one, one question, Mayor? And it's a good question. I'd start by saying that, um, if there's a primary purpose in the, the development services departments within the city, that would be engineering, building, and planning, it would be to provide exemplary customer service. And if I have to pound that into these two gentlemen's heads one more time, well, their head just might, might pop because, uh, that really is our, our ultimate goal. And I know that, that, um, that the building official, if he was here and, and Keith would echo those sentiments. But those, those departments largely are interrelated and, and at least in, in the city hall, they're separated by a parking lot. And so when development occurs, it's up to the planning department to really act as, uh, as that person or that department that has to gel all of those comments into one particular entitlement. We, from, at least in this department, um, my mandate would be, we do a lot of hand-holding, we walk people back and forth across that parking lot. We started back in two thousand and twelve, what we call project manager, where if someone starts with a site plan review or a, or a larger entitlement, maybe it's a subdivision rezone and precise plan, that they have a single point of contact from start and that comes out of the, the planning department. I think that this planning department probably knows more about the other processes after the planning entitlement is done than any other city I've ever worked for, because they have to in order to be able to discern which department is the problem when a client calls and says, where's, where's my plan check? It's been two weeks, I don't know where my plan check is, or, or I dropped off the, that plan set with engineering, what are, what are they doing with it? Okay, I didn't get an encroachment permit, I paid a fee, that kind of thing. And, um, we use the project manager, um, process to facilitate, uh, helping those, helping those clients get through the project. What we would say is from application to occupancy. I've never seen it, I don't want to honk, honk the city, the, the development services horn, but I've never seen a city get, get projects through. Especially with the, the staff, staff levels we have get projects through and out, up and out of the ground and final in the timelines that the city has over and over demonstrated an ability to do.
Absolutely right, I, I, I agree. We, we are short-staffed and we have an, an all-star staff that gets things done, um, i- i- in comparatively with other cities, I think, much, much quicker. And I absolutely love the single point of contact, that, that really is a game changer, that you can get to know that person, not being tossed around with call a different number, ask somebody else, he's gone, he's out. I think it's worked out just beautifully, thank you very much for that.
It's hard to write it into ordinance though.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know whether, whether, I think there needs to be at least a little flexibility in how we implement that.
Sure.
Sometimes we struggle, i- it'd be difficult to somehow incorporate, uh, project manager into, uh, into the ordinance update. But it is something that we've kind of fine-tuned where other cities, uh, are beginning to emulate it.
Fantastic job, you and your team did a, a great job, Chris.
I got the question, where do you get this building from? That's a pretty picture. Is that in Madera?
It is not in Madera.
Okay.
And, uh, you're just gonna have to find it. I had an early morning, okay, I'll, you know, I'll tell, it's a story. I had an early morning doctor's appointment, okay? It's a, it's a doctor's office and I was the first person there and you can see the sun's just hitting the building. It's a, it was, I had an eight AM appointment and it's on Herndon Avenue in Fresno. It's off Herndon. And it just has, uh, the, it's a simple design, but it just has the most perfect little accents and curvilinear, curvilinear, um, wall sections and little different wall sconces that, just the right colorations and the like. Uh, I, I think that one of our developers in the fair city of Madera, they really should embrace this design and build it right here so I can take pictures of it right here. Sometimes buildings can be simple but elegant and this is one of them.
Chris, I have a question. On the same note, um, that, uh, our mayor had, uh, asked you regarding, um, linkage and you talked about interacting with, uh, other departments. So would you be kind enough to guide me through the process if I'm a new, uh, let's say, business coming to town and I need to have plant checks and what have you?
Right.
Now, you did mention how you interact with these departments. Now, is there a system in place that tells you where this process is, assuming that the person calls in and instead of calling the building department, he calls the planning department? Planning department would then be able to look at a system and say, you're at this point of progress? Or would it be here, let me go ahead and, uh, take you over to building and they could further assist you? Do you all integrate the same system? Do you all communicate? I mean, obviously, it's a development department, but I mean, we know that there's a planning, a building, engineering.
We don't have any entitlement software where we can pop up a screen, type in site plan review two thousand eighteen twenty-five, know who signed off on a distribution or things along those lines. Um, we are, uh, there, there are some municipalities that have that. Uh, I worked, when we worked at the county, they had a, a software system called Posse that did that. Um, it did a good job and a bad job, depending on who you talk to. In other municipalities I've worked for, there hasn't been that type of electronic tran- transfer of information into some type of software application, that, a tracking, tracking software. Uh, and the, and our, our current, um, munis, we don't have modules in place where we could do that with our current mon- munis ERP software. So it really is, it really is, uh, good old seed of the plants, uh, seed of the pants, um, interaction with the client and with our coworkers. To a degree, uh, the, the responsibility is placed a little bit on the, the applicant because if, if that applicant doesn't call, there's gonna be an, I mean, we got a lot of different projects going on at one time. And so if that applicant doesn't call, there's going to be an assumption. And we've coached that applicant to say, if you have a problem, call us, or call your project manager, we're gonna get it, get you across the finish line. So we can't help you if we don't know there's a problem. So, and trust me, um, by and large, a citizen will call you if there's a problem. And, uh, and that's, that's, then it's up to the planning staff to get on the ball, um, give them a call back, find out exactly where their project is and, and then get answers back to them. And after a time, honest councilman, if you've done it for four, five, six, eight years, you, you know where the issue is, after they explain what the problem is, you know exactly where to go to discern what the status is. And, and so it becomes, um, once you have an understanding of the process, then it becomes pretty easy to, to, to get there. So, but there, we don't have any, we can't just bring up, uh, a, a software application and say, oh, your problem is that the, the, the code enforcement division hasn't signed off on, on a particular component of it or what have you. We, uh, we, uh, we largely rely upon, uh, personal interaction to get across the finish line.
And, and I think the point that you referenced regarding the point of contact, I think that's a great, uh, concept there. Because it'd rather be someone in your department than us out in the, out in the, uh, in the, in the districts, you know, cause eventually, you know, like you said, if there's a problem that lies somewhere, then they'll reach out to either, uh, a council member or someone else. But, you know, I, I do like what you said there. I mean, I'm not sure if that's something that in the future, the city can possibly integrate because I think it, you know, when it comes to delivering service to the individual, understanding more that these things are available through whether it be technology or a point of contact. And I think the person that hasn't gone through the, uh, process of, uh, getting a site plan check or even opening a business in the city of Madera, what is the process? And I think that if you simplify that, technology plays a big part on that as well. So you brought up a really good point, I, I think that would be something that, uh, the city would benefit. If that's something, a software is available that can be integrated to the departments.
It is, and for full disclosure, we, we do have, the building division does have a permit tracking, permit tracking process for, for building permits. And, uh, but the planning division, um, doesn't necessarily, planning, planning entitlements are quirky in that where a building permit gets, gets submitted, it gets issued and it's final, there's certain benchmarks throughout that process. Our current software can handle that type, that type of process. But with a planning entitlement, I, I met with a business owner today who's been in the process for three years and, um, and she's got, they have their, their civil plans are ready to go and, and, and they've done some of their business building, building permit work in terms of ADA and, and they met because they, they, they wanna go and exchange the, change the building floor plan. And there's no way for that, that, we don't have, because it's more free-form, it's a little difficult to, uh, for planning to do so. But I think it's the right department, uh, because so much, so much development. Whether it's a person's, you know, a, it's just an individual client who, citizen who just starts by asking questions about what it takes to do this, that, or the other. Or a developer who wants to build a hundred and twenty homes on, on twenty acres. So much of that interaction starts at our counter, if not just for geography's sake, you're right there in the foyer. So, um, I think the, the community development director has something to add.
You're gonna let a switch defeat you?
Tony and I practiced that ahead of time and I still, still got it wrong. Uh, I just wanted to, to make the point that, that Chris did make, which is our, our new software, um, citywide ERP software does, does include a, an opportunity for us to be able to, um, look at permits across the, the different, uh, departments. We're not fully implemented in, in our ability to, to use it on an integrated basis, but we do have that, that capacity or at least most of the capacity, and we will get there, um, at, at a point where that's a significant tool. That the, what Chris said, and I think most of you get from a common sense perspective, that, um, the, the, the permit tracking system is not gonna be as valuable as, as the, the hands-on interaction and a, a lead, uh, point of contacts familiarity with a project. And, uh, just, just by way of example, um, there, there's a, we had a, a project that we had been working on with, with a, a property owner for, for weeks, um, in terms of trying to get them where they needed to be. And at some point, they, at the, towards the end of that process, they sent their contractor in for the first time. And, uh, despite the fact that they had been working with a single point of contact, it was, it was a Jesus, wave, wave your hand at us, Jesus. They'd been working with Jesus for, for weeks. The contractor went in and went straight to the engineering department. He didn't know exactly what he needed, but he, it was something to do with the engineering department. The, the point of contact in the engineering department that, that Jesus was working with wasn't at his desk. Um, Keith was in a meeting and so the, there was a complete loss of, of continuity with, with what that person needed and how the city could provide it and. And there was a period of a couple hours where people threw their hands up in the air and said, how could we not, you know, city, how could you not know what you're doing? Well, you know, we, if, if our property owner had simply used the, the system that we had set up and that they had been using, Jesus was at his desk, he was available, he knew exactly what needed to be done. And when they connected the dots later in the day, it, it went, it went as seamless as it could have been. But the, the ability on a, on a personal basis to, to handle problems is really the benefit of a project manager. And you've heard me say before, a significant part of our, our battle is getting people that we work with to, to buy into it and believe that they can actually contact Jesus or Rob or Chris or me or, or an engineer, we use an engineer for our project manager, to, to solve problems in other departments or to be their point of contact for their, their overall project. We, we have since changed our contact letters to, at the very beginning of the process, and with an approval letter to remind them that, that they have a point of contact throughout the process and that they can call that person and ask that, that point at, at any time for, for assistance. Or they can ask for an assembly of the city's development roundtable, which is all of the city's development representatives to, to go over projects. So we do our best to remind folks, but getting them to believe it and to, to use it is, is not, you know, it's harder than you, than you think. Because like Chris said, most agencies don't do it, so it's, it's a little unusual.
So if I get this straight, let's say I come in with a brand-new project in town. At that point, I'd be assigned a project manager?
The, the first time you're assigned a project manager, or you could be assigned a project manager, is if, if you submit a PPR, preliminary project review, which is no, a no-fee informal review. The city will do that review, provide you a written set of comments. At the end of that comment letter, it will, it is, it has my name on it, it has Chris's name on it, and then it says, your point of contact is, you know, blank, whoever that is, it's not a blank, it's a name. Please contact this person with any questions you have throughout the, the process.
From there on, it?
From there on, it's that, it's that person. And the same thing when a, a project approval is granted, either by staff or by the planning commission, the follow-up letters include that.
And as, as Chris had mentioned, I think what's fantastic about it is how, in, in a sense, not that you don't know about each other's department, but it, it helps you to understand a little bit better about those different departments and what's required, because those same questions kind of come over and over and over.
Definitely.
It's not necessarily, well, that's not my department, I'll get back to you. I think they've learned enough and interacted enough with one another to know what those requirements are. And if I can go back just a step or two, you had said early on, Chris, that no, no developer had showed up to a meeting or workshop that you had. But I think we are very, very successful in those small business workshops, whether you have an existing business or if you're thinking of opening a new business. Those have been absolutely fantastic. There's a lot of questions from, how can I, when can I, financing, I'm a great cook but don't know what I need as far as, you know, kitchen items and things like that. Chris and his team have been very instrumental on where your business may or may not work, what some of the requirements are gonna be from our standpoint, and getting them off on the right, on the right step has been huge. I think it's really saved a lot of, of turmoil, a lot of angst, and definitely saved a lot of money with some local businesses here in Madera. And some of those people that graduated, if you will, from that class are, are business owners today, thanks to the help of, of our team here at, at planning and engineering and building. It's been great. We need to do more of those.
Appreciate the kindness.
Absolutely.
It's, it's probably a little bit of an oversimplification, but there's, there's more or less two different kinds of builder developers that, that come to the, the planning counter. One is the kind of builder developer that's an owner that says, I have the APC property, what can I do on my property? And the second is the, is the developer that has a specific use, it's an industrial use or a McDonald's or, or what have you, and they say, I, I wanna build a mini storage, where can I build my mini storage? And so the, the tabular format that Chris presented to you really facilitates both of those inquiries at, at the same time, simply by either starting at the top and saying, my property is owned this, I go down the list and see what's permitted in my zone, or you go to the mini storage row and you go across and say which zones are, is my mini storage allowed in. So like I said, it's, it's not universally those two classifications, but the, the structure of the new ordinance is really designed to accommodate both.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Chris, great presentation. I certainly agree. Wherever we can provide as much predictability as possible for both businesses and prospective developers, it's gonna, in the long run, yield cost savings and I, I think expediency in those projects. Couple of quick questions. One, piggybacking on Tyler Munis, I know the city of Fresno is going through a similar update, and they're planning and building divisions with Asella, though, so I know it's a different provider, and they do have the functionality now where you can not only check the process of your permits, but also submit plans and permits online. I get if, as far as the permit tracker may not be able to come online for some time, but what about if folks wanted to submit their plans online? Would that be possible in the near term? Is there a module for that or maybe something we can explore?
I think the, the answer is, yes, the system has the capacity to accept online submittals, but no, we, we do not currently have that capacity built into our implementation. But that is something that can be added over, over time as, as we have the ability to manage it.
I, I think it's something we, we should probably investigate, especially as, as building activity and development activity continues to increase. And obviously, those come with significant costs, but I, I think I would like to maybe look at a menu of options there, given the expediencies and, and, you know, updates that it might provide, so. And I had a question on 10-3.451 on applicability. Now, is that, under those new requirements, if I heard this correctly, this is where a site plan review would be triggered?
Correct.
So on this particular line, all refurbishing of existing structures where the exterior facade of the structure is altered, excepting the application of paint. So that would require a site plan review?
That's correct. So if someone wanted to do a facade refresh, whether that's, oh, shifting from, from, from a wood fascia to a stucco fascia, or adding covered porches, or altering the architectural, architectural characteristics of a structure, that would be triggered, that would trigger a site plan review?
So thinking of downtown, and I know with prospective projects that we've had, sometimes the triggering of a site plan review could be an Achilles' heel for a project, because we know there's gonna be much more scrutiny, much more requirements, and it may not check out. When I think of something like exterior facade improvements, which may be a betterment for that particular building, is there an in-between perhaps for the new commercial district oriented towards downtown, where it may not trigger a site plan review, but it may follow a better palette or guideline as to those type of facade upgrades? Do you follow me?
I do. I look at the, the zoning ordinance, if we're gonna talk about downtown, as being kind of, kind of that, we're gonna establish an area that ultimately is our downtown, and then we're going to do additional land use planning as to what that downtown ultimately wants to be. And that's not just from a physical perspective, but, I mean, just from a human and cultural perspective as well. I, I know the general plan says, we want it to be the best it can be. I'm just not sure whether the, the citizenry or the city know exactly what that exactly, how they want that to take on a form.
You know, Will, if I can interrupt you, Chris, basically, long story short, we screwed up downtown. We had a really nice downtown overall plan. It went in, and then all of a sudden, we turned around, and it's painted different colors.
So you're the one.
No, not exactly. Problem is, we didn't catch it. Now, we had the same thing happen to the burger place that became a Mexican restaurant. They changed the color, and we had to notify them that they had to go back to the original approved color of the original tenant. And so therefore, we've learned and we've, we've honed it down so that, yes, I think what you're saying is, we're, we're not gonna object to a fresh coat of paint, but the fresh coat of paint can't be fuchsia pink and purple next to something that is very like the picture we saw of the office.
Well, per the ordinance, if site plan review isn't triggered, a person can paint their structure. But I think I know what, what you're talking about. And here's the plight, here's the plight of our downtown.
So let's look at Clovis. They have a lot of facades, they have a lot of older buildings, and whether they be stucco facades or whatever it might be, that add a nice aesthetic element to it. And if we had a business owner or property owner that would wanna do a similar application, I'd hate to trigger site plan review when there may be a, you know, positive, you know, a, a betterment, if you get what I'm saying. So I, I'm just saying, maybe there's a next step or an in-between as to a guideline that can.
Let's stay on, let's stay on, on Clovis and Old Town for a moment, because, you know, when I came here, I really, I really looked at downtown as Old Town 1975. And in 1975, Old Town Clovis doesn't, didn't look like Clovis today. It looked like downtown Madera.
Yeah.
Now, that said, number one, it takes a city to, to take on a planning ethic that says, we, we can fix this. In the case of Clovis, they adopted a downtown, an Old Town specific plan, and virtually everything in Old Town, whether you're just gonna do a little facade changeover, will go through a site plan review. In their case, they have much more of a hand in architectural review, because their, their downtown plan has specific architectural criteria that are looking to create a sense of place, a theme there that is, that is Old Town. And that's what I'm saying here, in that we're gonna create a, a boundary for, for downtown, and we're gonna say, what do we want that downtown to be? But we're gonna have to have some type of implementing ordinance. And, and that may be a downtown specific plan, that may be a, a set of downtown development criteria adopted as, as something less than a specific plan. There's multiple ways to go about that. Harlan Ranch, which is a beautiful, fresh, fresh development, relatively young, wasn't done with a specific plan. It was done with a master development plan. So, and that's what was adopted, and that's what was utilized. The struggle with downtown, though, any way you slice it, is that none of those properties have seen site plan review in a half a century. And so every one of those properties have deferred infrastructural issues that we talk about in a small business development workshop. We tell small businesses that you have to look down and look at the sidewalk, you have to look around to make sure that these unknown and unseen potential expenses don't, don't, you know, hit your bottom line right out of the gate and, and change the entire financial prospectus moving forward on a young business. But, and that's really the hurdle the city has to figure out, because just to continue to defer the problem doesn't solve the problem. It, it just exacerbates its further. Instead of having 60-year-old buildings that don't have any of the necessary infrastructure in place, you end up having 70-year-old buildings that still have the same problems. And that's gonna be the challenge in, in moving forward with downtown. It, it's great to have the Caltrans grant looking at, looking at the, the circulation components and the right-of-way issues and looking for solutions there. The city's gonna have to come in behind that. I used the word springboard last time. The zoning ordinance provides at least a boundary, and it retains the development standards that are in place there right here and now. But the next task, the next challenge will be to identify, what do we want this city to be? And then, and then to find, find funding mechanisms. Right now, the city is using development incentives, and, you know, I, I do have a preliminary project review right now, where, wherein I probably wouldn't be seeing this mixed-use two-story development on, on East Yosemite Avenue, on a vacant lot, coming to me if there wasn't a potential for those types of cost savings. I'm, I'm encouraged by that. The lady I, I met with today on a property on Gateway Drive, she's trying to move forward with purpose after struggling for three years to realize her vision on the site. And a big reason for that is because there's a potential for development incentives where they can divert some of those, those city fees onto some of the improvements that come with, come with redeveloping a property. So me, and it's a, it's a great trial that, that the council's adopted, and at least out of the gate, I think there's some, there's some preliminary encouraging signs that are coming from potential development that, that, that we're seeing come across our, our plate. In terms of the long-term solution, I think that once we get through the zoning ordinance and, and amend our maps, well, we'll take the marching orders of the council, and if it's your wish for us to start moving forward with some, some focused planning on the downtown district, that's exactly what we'll do on your behalf.
I have a question, Chris.
Yes.
Just really fast, to piggyback on Councilman Rodriguez and Chair Grant about, if you're starting a new business, you come up to the counter of planning commission, do we have a generic form that kind of lays out all the, the jumps and hoops that they're gonna have to go through to open up a business?
Not a generic form, but it starts with, here's how a person who came, comes to the city hall and wants to open a business, here's how that will go. They'll be directed down to our business license division, and they'll be handed business license application forms, and Lisa will typically direct them back to the planning division, just to make sure that zoning's in place. She's been, she's part of that project, project team, and she has a good eye for what does and doesn't require any potential discretionary review. But typically, they're gonna be sent back to us if there's any red flag on their operational statements or their application forms. The perfect pathway to a business license is get a business license, get a signed permit of your entertaining signage, and, and then see the building, building division for a discussion on whether or not any building permits will be required. And we wish that happened more, but there's a long list of uses that require some type of discretionary review, whether it's a zoning permit or a use permit, or in some cases, site plan review as a component of establishing the business. And it's at that time, really, that the, the, the planning department has to kind of take over that ball from, there's kind of a hand, handing off of that ball in the process from, from business license into the planning division and, and processing that, that application, and then, and transferring that ball back into the business license division to have that, that license issued. Does that answer your question?
Well, I know that in, when you go to the counter and you have your business license, you're going through the process, the process that, that if they're gonna have to pay a fee to get on the planning commission agenda, and then they have to go through the building inspector, and then the fire marshal has to come out. Do we have a checklist for these people that are coming to the counter to kind of see the steps that they're gonna have to take to get their business up and running?
Chris, we, we do, we do have a flyer, a starting a new business flyer, that's a, a generic outline that fits most new business startup processes. I, I think maybe where we're getting hung up a little bit is, most new businesses, the key question, at least upfront, is, is where are they gonna, where are they gonna establish? And is, are they gonna establish an existing storefront that may or may not have the right zoning or may not have the right parking and those sorts of things? And so almost, almost always, the first question is, is where's your business gonna go? And, and what do you need on that property or in that suite to accommodate your, your business? And that's more difficult to have a, a one-size-fits-all flyer or, or informational booklet, because there's so much variation. You know, sometimes it's literally, you know, you, you had a similar tenant of this space move out last week, so you just go get your business license and your signed permit, and, and you're good to go. And others, you may need, you know, two conditional use permits, a site plan review, and, you know, a building permit, a plumbing, an electrical permit, and it's, it's a much more extensive process. So it, it depends a little bit on, on the particulars.
Well, I think like a form, that you had it all listed, and it fits a certain resident.
Well, I think like a form that you had it all listed and it fits a certain, um, resident, you would just highlight. This is what, these are, you could highlight down the row. This is what you're going to need to hit. So they know what they have to hit and know the hoops and all the boundaries they're going to have to go through. And it's all laid out. Cause some people are just visual and they need to see it. I, you know, you're telling me exactly what I need. I walk out to the car and I've already forgotten, you know, three quarters of what you just told me.
Yeah, I think, I think we understand. I don't, I don't think we have anything at present that accomplishes just that. But that's, sounds like a reasonable idea. We can see if we can, yeah, I think.
And then, and then you, you've got to tailor it towards business and residential. Cause, cause I'll give you an example, movie theater. I walk in, I know right off I need a CUP just to exist in any city in the state. So I'm already as, in a different category. And I can guarantee you, everybody's going to inspect me. I'm going to get to know the entire city very quickly and very. And I've had the opportunity over the last twenty years to build three projects in Santa Barbara County, one pro, a couple of projects here, El Centro, Imperial County, and also in Arizona. So I got the whole garment. And I can tell you, the city of Madera was one of the easier ones. Not the easiest, because the state of California has certain regulations. Arizona was a little bit more streamlined. Lompoc, the city manager really wanted the theater. I got his phone number, whatever I needed. I made one phone call. And, and it was very boom, boom, boom. But we still had to go through more hoops in Lompoc than we had to go through here. So it, it's, it's relative. And I understand what you guys are saying about people. The smaller the projects, it's going to be easier for them to, to get a, a grasp on. You get a, a shopping center, or you, you, these guys have already, are in the big boy playing theater.
No, it's not their first rodeo, right.
Right. Uh, the, the first time I did the theater, I had to be educated to a certain extent. But at the same time, you must realize that basically when you build a theater, you're going to spend a minimum of a million dollars a screen. That's just the start budget. So it already puts you in a different category. And you are coming in and you know you're going to get hit with fees and you know you got to work with the city. And you, you, you're just sort of piling up. What, what, you walk away with a packet. Actually, the first time you come in, you usually bring your architect. Cause the architect wants to meet everyone in the city. Cause he wants to get all the business cards he can, so he can have all the contacts also. So, uh,
It varies.
It varies. And it also depends, like when Chris helped with Marketplace. Those guys were very professional. Came in, boom, boom, boom. They knew what they wanted. They knew what to ask for. They knew realistically what they could ask for and possibly get, and they knew what not to ask for. Now, you, you get some other people and they, they ask for everything because they don't know. The planning commission, we're sort of the, the go-between sometimes because the, the staff will tell them, staff will tell them, then they come to the planning commission, we, we, we say, no, staff is correct. You need to, you can't get a special variance because if, if we do, then we've created a, a special endowment. But we always take it case by case and try to analyze exactly what's going on each time. And sometimes there are special issues and it does make sense.
The big thing is encouraging the development review. The preliminary development review is sit around the table, speak out loud, throw, throw your ideas out there. And our biggest issue is when you have folks that move forward on a project and ask for forgiveness later. And now we're trying to bridge these, these deltas. And I'm familiar with the city of Fresno's processes and I've probably worked on a number of different projects through my day job. They have a chart that you can follow. I'll say it's very difficult to follow. The most, the beneficial thing is, one, did you take advantage of DRC? And two, do you have an architect, engineer, contractor that knows the city? And knows the people to contact. And I think it's similar principles here. Maybe it's getting the word out that we have these business-friendly, you know, um, around, you know, roundtable offerings available to prospective companies, whether they're large or whether they're small. But, um, yeah.
I would add that, uh, in terms of start, starting a business, um, we only offer them periodically. But the small business workshops really do, um, help people get a grasp on what the, what the potential pitfalls are, the processes that might be required. And, um, the, the, the ten steps to opening a business in the city, in the city handout that we created um, is the kind of thing where you can tuck it in your pocket. It's got every phone number you ever, you have, ever might need. Other cities, uh, speaking of difficult guides, um, when, in researching that, that forum, one city had a forty-three-page guide, um, that I, I imagine that they filled their garbage can with prospective business owners who walked out the door and said, well, that isn't going to work. So we have a one-page guide. I really encourage, you'd be surprised how, how, how the small business workshop can save, save people so many headaches. Because, and it was established for that very reason, just small business owners that found themselves now in a place where they never thought they were going to go. And we wanted, we wanted, we wanted success stories out of our small business community. We didn't, we didn't want, um, the kind of press that we were getting.
So everybody who walks through the door, Chris, gets it, if it's a small business, gets a ten-step guide that you guys created for the small.
It's available. It's, uh, in a little rack on the side. I think it goes out with the, with the building permit packet, but I'm not positive. I'd have to look, I'd have to confirm that it did.
Well, maybe if, if it isn't, make sure it does.
Exactly. I know I, I, I fill up our rack in the planning department from time to time with the, the packets that, the handouts that we created for the small business workshop. Because we interact a lot, a lot with small business owners and we'd rather have success stories than, um, than that, that middle, that nightmare in between that we get from time to time. How, where, how did I end up here? So.
Councilman Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chris, I have a quick question on the C3 update. Uh, I, I really like the way you, you've, uh, kind of made the, the zone a little easier to understand. Help me though, before I make a decision on the approval of this ordinance, as to, as to why we stopped at Lake Street and why we didn't continue all the way to Tozer. It seems to me that there's a lot of land, uh, that we, we have to develop in that, in that area. Why wouldn't we extend that, especially with our opportunity zone, uh, sort of being right there? And, and future, uh, probably future investment opportunities, uh, for, for incoming businesses?
Well, we, we certainly, it's not a, it's not a rigid boundary. We certainly could, uh, provide for some alternative, uh, boundary. The reason why we didn't move forward is, is twofold. Uh, moving, moving, um, eastward, there's a long gap where it's mostly residential.
Right.
In place. And then beyond that, it was mostly either vacant or, or contemporarily developed retail that, that maybe didn't closely align with, uh, our old downtown. Now, with the opportunity zone, at the time, uh, the C3 zone was conceived and then, um, then boundaryed wasn't in place. So there may be, there may be added incentives where we revisit what that looks like. But that's the reason why, uh, within our, our initial analysis, we left it right here. Because this is pretty much the historical core of the city and the goals and policies, the general plan that are really written specific to, to realizing cer- certain things within that downtown core.
I, I, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not objecting to it. If, if anything, what I'm doing is, is maybe wanting to go on record as to saying that I, I would be interested in exploring, extending, uh, further east, uh, just, just because I, I, it feels like there, there's going to be some retail opportunity out there or development opportunity out there, especially as, as we continue to grow in that direction, uh, with the county building, uh, on the east side coming and, and plans for more schools. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're prepared in, in our zone C3 to accommodate those new developing neighborhoods and businesses.
Yeah, we're in preliminary review on, um, a large swath of vacant land between FIG and Elm right now.
Right, yeah.
For retail development.
Right.
And just for clarification, the, the, the downtown, uh, zone district is, um, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it might be described as kind of a, a, a traditional downtown storefront, um, oriented zone, but is not, we're not suggesting that, um, there aren't commercial opportunities further to the, to the east or northeast than, than what is shown in that, what we kind of call the old bell-shaped, uh, downtown. The, the, the sort of the traditional street frontage and the, the buildings, um, on the sidewalk. That's kind of the, the limits of what the downtown zone district are, are contemplated as. But if there's some feature of that, whether it's, um, mixed use or a certain level or intensity of development, um, that you'd like to see further down, then, then, um, let's, let's make sure we understand that and, and either extend the, the zone or, um, make sure it's built into whatever, whatever the other zone districts are, are there. Cause I don't, I don't think there's any philosophical objection, um, on, on staff's part that those kinds of, of benefits or design features would have to stop at a certain point. So, um, feel free to grab us offline and, and share your thoughts there. We can make sure we, we capture them.
Okay, I, I will do that. And then the, the last question I had, um, looking at sort of the ag and, and the UR conditions, did, did we not feel that it was necessary to address the cannabis issue? Or that, that the verbiage in there kind of took care of all of that?
We did have, uh, definitions and, uh, originally we had, uh, actually cannabis within our use schedules. And ultimately, um, in light of the fact that we would have to adopt an ordinance that fully encapsulated, um, cannabis as, uh, in terms of Prop sixty-five and, and the sale, manufacture, transportation and distribution of cannabis in the city. We thought that, that was something that if the council directed us to move forward accordingly, it probably would be a standalone ordinance for one. We might have to do a small add-on, uh, in terms of the use schedules as to where it might be allowed for.
Okay.
So we certainly haven't ignored, ignored that potential. It's just in that, that it isn't, isn't an active issue at this point in juncture.
Yeah.
We could always amend the ordinance and incorporate it later.
By no means was I trying to insinuate that you were ignoring it, just, just for the record. But, uh, I, I value just sort of having a, a better understanding so I can wrap my head around. I, I, I thought that would be your answer, so I, I just kind of wanted to hear it.
I blame Dave Merchant's red El Marco.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
He's going to start wearing a Rastafarian.
Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris, I have another one. Did, when you were looking at the C3 downtown commercial, did you guys take into effect that the Art Civic Center that is going to be built just past where we have our C3s here?
And that, that's a good observation as well. As I was looking at the, the proposed, um, boundary, I was thinking, well, do we, do we take it down Madera Avenue to the freeway? And, and I, I think the, the defining factor is, I, I most certainly think that it, well, the reason why it's not around the courthouse is because the courthouse is a public facility. And, um, you know, as I'm starting to think and digest it, the art center very well could be part of a, probably in a public facility zone district as well. But there certainly isn't any reason why it couldn't be, tho- those areas of the community can't be a part of a downtown plan. It's just that the zoning district probably doesn't closely align to the, to the performing arts center. But we certainly would want to incorporate that land within a downtown plan. So the boundary of the zone doesn't need, doesn't have to be necessarily one hundred percent aligned with the boundary of a downtown, um, plan.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
Makes sense.
So I was thinking, you know, about, um, the, the railroad train going through the middle of the city. Are there any provision for, you know, in the future concerning, um, elevating or lowering the tracks for traffic?
It's not addressed within, within the zoning ordinance. And, and largely the Union Pacific Railroad will, will make those determinations as to whether they would want to. I mean, they could put it in a trench as well for that matter. We embrace the roots of the railroad through the community. Um, but the zoning ordinance, you might note, there's no real zone district for that transportation corridor. And it's largely controlled by the railroad.
They, they're almost sacred, I'll, I'll let you know, okay? And just, I don't know if you do know it, but that's the single most profitable line up and down the state of California. The one that run through, runs through this valley. So they're not going to do anything to jeopardize that.
I do have one last question.
Of course, Marburg, Tim.
During the initial, uh, presentation, um, I heard you talk about the R1s and how in the past we've allowed, you know, obviously something got grandfathered in there. But with respects to the ADUs, I know not long ago, we had a, an amendment done to the zoning. So how do those play, I mean, you showed this, this picture here, but how would those, um, impact any of these areas that you see here within that picture that you have here?
That's a good question. Thank you, Councilman. Let me answer it in two different, two different parts. In, in one part, the purpose and intent of the ADU ordinance that is born out of the state of California, ordinance is adopted consistent with the state's ordinance, really looks to increase density in existing housing stock. And, um, Harlan Ranch is a, a very new development that, um, although some of the lot, it's going to be very difficult to do, to add additional stock into many of these very small lot developments. But if, uh, if we have a, a six thousand square foot subdivision that's developed today and the, a particular homeowner wishes to add an accessory dwelling unit as a component of, of their, their home, that's entirely possible to do that with a new home or an existing, or an existing home, as long as it's consistent with the state's criteria, which is exactly what the, the city adopted, the state's criteria. So, um, you know, a twenty-four hundred square foot lot is probably not going to meet the development standards to add an ADU. But, um, just across the street in this photograph, there's, uh, some larger, larger lots that, as an example, this home right here most clearly has enough room within its rear yard to provide for an accessory dwelling unit. And our ordinance would not preclude that occurring, one, one iota.
So, but in, in a, in a case like the smaller, uh, lots, then there would be a problem with the zoning.
They won't meet the criteria because there's no footprint left. And these small lots here, you have basically a five-foot setback all the way around them.
Okay.
So there'd be no place to place an accessory unit. And, so.
In what area of Madera is this picture?
This is not in Madera. It will be one day though.
Right?
That's what we're, we're working towards.
That's, that's the answer I was waiting for you.
I've seen the lighting patterns. I've seen the lighting patterns for, for Village D. Um, they provide for a wide, wide array of housing opportunities, including alley, alley-loaded lots and the like. And these are, these are niches within the residential market that the city, the city doesn't offer at this point in juncture. That's one of the purposes and it makes perfectly good sense to me. If I'm a developer, I want to satisfy all of the market niches to provide for all housing types that might be desired by the various populations that are seeking new homeownership. So, um, we're going to see a development that has this type of mixture of densities and mixture of housing types. You know, when I, when I worked for, for Clovis, about half of this was still bare dirt. Uh, but in this one development, there was at least eight model sets that were actively engaged. And it's a place people wanted to live then. And it's a place where homes were built consistently throughout the recession, where other places languished. And that speaks to the idea that people were, were buying into the idea of the lifestyle of living in this type of neighborhood. And that's the type of neighborhood we'd like to see. That's the type of neighborhood our general plan aspires to the city creating. And, um, we're very fortunate to be partnering in a specific plan that would provide for out of the gate, uh, two square, two square miles of development, which would be very consistent with that. Or the third, uh, that's currently in Williamson Act that would be held in reserve at least for ten years.
Well, Chris, I think you certainly have direction. You've heard questions and comments and concerns from, uh, planning commissioners and council members. So you have a, a pretty good flavor of, of, uh, what we'd like to see in the future. But I, I think you have direction from where we want to go from here, unless I hear any objections from, from anybody. But I think you did a fantastic job. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, do the ordinance call for, you know, like, uh, studio art, you know, livable spaces downtown?
Actually, the, the new C3 zone district does provide for mixed-use opportunities. And as I noted earlier, I'm actually doing a preliminary review for a mixed-use project that has, uh, has living units above, above, uh, commercial. Pretty excited about, um, that, that coming our way. So that is, that is provided specifically within the downtown C3 zone district. So if I'm hearing you right. So if I'm hearing you right, you'd like me to move forward with scheduling a public hearing before the planning commission at my earliest possible opportunity. I can do that. Thank you, Council. Commission?
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle, fantastic presentation. Next, on to commissioner reports. I'll turn it over to Chairman Grant to call on his commissioners for any commissioner reports that they may have.
Oh, anybody from planning? Well, guys, I personally think this was successful. You know, I think, as Donald and Andy can attest, I've been on the planning commission for a long, long time.
I can remember when we started.
Yeah, that's scary, but yeah. And we did have this once before, and I think it was either 10 or 12 years ago. Andy and I were trying to remember. And it is helpful, because we need to all work together to get this plan out there. We need to have a planning commission, we try to determine on a case-by-case basis. But at the same time, we need some guidance. One, we're appointed by you. Two, any appeal, or once it gets approved by us, has to still come through you. So we want to make sure we're doing the correct job, so that when it comes to you, it's basically in a bowtie. And we can move forward. Now, there's gonna be some, you know, and I even made an appearance at a city council meeting because we went round and round with this one applicant, and it, I just wanted to let you know that we took it very seriously, and we almost had an hour-long debate trying to make sure, and we could not come to a compromise. And so I brought it to you guys, and I think it did go ahead and go through that way, and then the gentleman rescinded. But I'm just saying, case by case, and, you know, before, I'll give you an example. I've been on here so long ago, that when the police department said, "No more beer and wine", there was no more beer and wine in that zone. Now, it's on a case-by-case basis, and basically, if it's a restaurant and it's serving within the ABC guidelines, we're more inclined to help that business get a beer and wine license and move forward. Where in the past, it was just the opposite, especially if it was in the downtown area where the police were having issues. But now, everybody's sort of worked together, and Chris can attest, that a lot of times I'll ask, when we get some of these, did the police weigh in on this? Because we used to always get a couple pages from them saying, "We've had this many incidents of this many time, and we don't want to have anymore." So we're all like, oh, okay, you know? But, so I think we are definitely more pro-business than we ever have been in my tenure on planning commission, and also pro-development. And I, but at the same time, we have state mandates that we have to enforce. And sometimes, the city is left holding the bag on those state mandates, and it makes it difficult, because all of a sudden, we're the enforcement arm, and it's maybe something we don't even agree with. So, thank you for having this meeting. I think we'll move forward in a better, more positive light for everybody.
Chairman Grant, thank you very much for those words. It's good to see you again. On the city council, I'll start with Councilman Rigby, if there's any report.
I appreciate the opportunity to sit amongst our planning commission, and I look forward to doing this for many more years. So with that, though, there's nothing else to report.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes, I attended the League of Cities General Assembly for three days. And we voted for a resolution for a commitment to support the repeal of preemption in California Food and Agriculture Code 11-501.1 that prevent local governments from regulating pesticide.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Gallegos?
I just wanted to say that I'm honored to sit up here with all the commissioners, and thank you for your timeless hours that you've put into making things happen in the city of Madera. And, Mr. Boyle, if I could, I'm not sure if my other council members are interested, but I would like to get a copy of your PowerPoint, if you could email that, to see the influence of, sphere of influence. I'd see it, you know, keep a copy of it so I can reference back. So if you have a minute, just send it my way. I'm not sure if anybody else is interested, maybe we all could get it and do what we want with it. That's it.
Mayor Protem?
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Hawley?
Oh, wow. I am so glad we got out of here before 8 o'clock. Honestly, I think this is a very good joint meeting, and if it's all possible, we need to do this at least every two years, because mainly, there's always somebody else coming on board every two years. So I think, you know, with our planning department, like Bobby said, we started way back there, over 16 years ago. And I only remember one meeting that we had since then. So I think this is a very good avenue that we can all bring our bodies together and talk on issues and making resolutions to make sure we get the right things adopted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to extend my thanks as well to the members of our planning commission, both for your service and for this joint meeting tonight. And I do agree, I think this is something we should do more often. And not only on the items that are right before us, but really looking long-term as well. I do think a specific plan for downtown is something that we should kind of sink our teeth into at some point in the near future. And I think a forum like this, with both of these bodies weighing in on something like that, could be advantageous for the city. So I'd like to thank you for your service. We spent a lot of time reviewing your meeting minutes, and reading through your questions and answers, and interpreting, you know, those deliberations, which help a great deal in making sound and informed decisions. So thank you for your service and for tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman. Bobby, I remember Ross Thornton used to say, "If it was a Mexican restaurant, it would be illegal not to have beer." He was always in favor of a liquor license if it was a Mexican restaurant.
And an Italian restaurant, wine.
Wine for an Italian restaurant.
That's right.
But we would deliberate for like 90 minutes, and then he would come in with a motion for the last 30 seconds to just make it happen. So those were good old days. I served on planning commission, starting in the mid-'90s. And so I absolutely love it, that's kind of where I made my bones before I joined city council. And so, not only to Bobby for serving so many years, but for every one of you. I know sometimes it can be a thankless job, and you, all of you, obviously really care about the city of Madera and want to see it grow. And I agree, Bobby, I think we are, compared to many moons ago, we are business-friendly and pro-business and pro-development, and we're gonna see the fruits of that labor very, very soon. So I also agree with my colleagues in that this shouldn't be the last time we do this. We should make this kind of a standing appointment every couple of years, and make sure that we're in tune. And because you are appointed by us, and you represent us, and I think we all work very, very well. There's a lot of fantastic people here on this side. And once again, thank you for your service, and for staff, and what you do to help us along the way and get things done. So with that, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.